Yeah, I think that there items like uh.
I'll find him here.
Yeah, one forty-one and uh. One forty-four. Everything's in.
Okay, here I got some ones. Here's one in March for one of the highlight of the normal. Bear with us a second.
You're not doing it to.
You're not talking about what you're just talking about. Any transfers or questions?
Right, 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 right.
What's our date?
Is that we?
Yeah, this is a good thing.
Okay.
It's on the dates. Excuse me.
That's all of them?
I think so.
All right.
It's nice.
All right, we're gonna get started and we're gonna go out of order tonight. Uh, Joe's requested that uh, he would like uh, me to go out of order here um, for um, we're gonna start in with ordinance number one forty-one two thousand fifteen. Nick, that'll be yours. And that is an ordinance making a fund transfer from general funds, funds to the law department to meet the obligation for the balance of two thousand fifteen. We are coming up on second reading and uh, is Janelle gonna be talking about this or you?
Well, Janelle, if you have any, if you have any questions.
Janelle, you wanna come on up?
And I can't answer from Janelle. That's why I had her. I'm trying to get myself up to speed with a lot of things and there's just a lot of stuff.
Come on in, Janelle.
So, does anybody have any questions?
Sylvia, do you have any questions?
No, I've, I've reviewed, I went through and reviewed the expenditures for the law department and uh, I really don't have any questions. I think we should just keep it a second reading. There's a number of, I have a spreadsheet which uh, managed to lose in a very short amount of time on this. Uh, which basically shows the expenditures for the law department. There are some major issues with uh, some of the law cases that were involved in. We've been at, we have been averaging around a thousand dollars on the Pla Farnhurst case. We suddenly escalated to forty-three hundred dollars uh, in the last billing. I don't think that's explained. There's uh, there's two cases where uh, the V Engel case where the uh, city is suing the three of the members of the council. That's up uh, greater than seven thousand dollars. And then there's a case that involves uh, former Mayor Kuhta, which is in appeals court and that's sitting there at plus seventy-four hundred. So, I think we can, uh, there's some other issues in here, but I think I've got a really good idea of what's going on. I don't think that we have a complete picture on the law department. There have been um, recent developments in the uh, law case, the Farnhurst case where they have been.
Could we hold any discussion about lawsuits to an executive session? That's decorum. It should not be discussed in general sessions.
It's been discussed for two years now, Jan, so well, now all of a sudden you want.
What you do is you jeopardize any case, either the defendant or the plaintiff.
I, I know, I know that's all.
You know, being that I'm a defendant on a personal level through my homeowners association and now uh, in a position here, I don't think that that is appropriate. Nor do I think it's appropriate for council members to take sides on this particular issue because this is a, a matter of uh, of an individual who's suing the city of Macedonia. And we all have a fiduciary obligation to the city.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but we are, here's the issue. Our law department, uh, two members were made defendants in this case in March of twenty fourteen. And the judge has determined that uh, they are, they are basically uh, eliminated, disqualified from the case. Because of the fact that they are defendants. They have been defendants for over a year, a year and a half now. And it's cost us an egregious amount of money. So, I think that, that the only point I was going to make, nothing about the case itself is.
Just to make something about the case, you just said something about the case.
It is public record, it's right on the website.
We've been talking about it for two years now.
Yeah, what was public.
Which doesn't make it right.
No, it is public.
I've sustained it, but you didn't stop us then.
It's public.
Said it every time we've tried to talk about it, it's an executive session, it's litigation.
I said that.
What is your question on why we wouldn't pass this? You think that you question, but let's take it at a higher level instead of individuals. Is the question that you believe there's money in here that should not be paid? Is money in here that should be paid that we could approve and at least get a little more up to date?
I think that once we can see the billing for December, which we haven't seen yet, we've seen the billing for uh, excuse me. We've seen the, the November billing, which is really for October. Uh, we can have a better picture, but my point is this. The, the law department has been involved in this case subsequent to the time in which they were made defendants. The judge has disqualified them.
No, take it to the high level. You're saying that you don't believe we should pay anything, let, let's just move this along.
Would you allow me to finish my sentence?
No, because you're talking about the details and we got enough to talk about.
Why don't we just put it for second reading and have an executive session?
Will we be, will we be in arrears of payment to the law department?
We are not.
No, I, you can't answer that. The administration answers that.
Well, I could, I can tell you what's in the latest funding.
We are in the, we are in the rear currently.
Like our two thousand fourteen was paid in two thousand fifteen.
My, my point is I.
She's answering the question if we're in arrears or not, could you at least honor and respect that?
Janelle says we're in the rear.
Well, okay, I understand that, I'm just reading from what I just told you that.
May I make a comment on the arrears? Janelle, we, you and I talked through it, right?
We spoke to Desiree.
I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names. With Desiree, when I talk, we're looking at two line items here and one is fifty-three forty and one is fifty-three forty-five. And one of the fifty-three forty is for three thousand dollars. And that was, that we are in arrears of and that was part of the negotiations that we had during last years uh, budget. And I uh, when I uh, said to Mr. Deemer, this is, this will work. I obviously have to get council's approval. Uh, I uh, when I went to council, I, I, I forgot the three thousand dollars, but then I went back and I told council, I screwed up and we should include the three thousand dollars. Everybody agreed to that and I, and I told Mr. Deemer afterwards as we're walking out, get it on the agenda for next week and we'll get you the three thousand dollars. It never got on the agenda. So, that, so as the issue is what is owed and what is not owed. Definitely the fifty-three forty is owed, that's the only point I want to make.
Well, that, that's fine.
Fifty-three forty-five, what was that day that you?
Line fifty-three forty-five.
Right, I know.
It's three thousand dollars.
No, it's.
That's no, there's no doubt that that is in arrears. And it was in arrears because we made a mistake last year. I told, told Mr. Deemer, well, just prepare the legislation and, and he didn't do that for whatever reason, I think he forgot. Uh, and it didn't get on. And answering Mr. Miglerini's question, that was my, that's the only point I'm making.
If I could just make a point and then we can move on. Uh, I don't disagree with what Davis said, he explained that to me and I agree that if we, we had asked him to, we've made the adjustment, made the agreement on fifty-three forty. That he should get an additional three thousand at the beginning of this year, we should give him the additional three, fifty, the additional three thousand for fifty-three forty. On the general uh, litigation line, which is fifty-three forty-five, I am, the point I was making is that there is an argument that we should be collecting what has been spent already since March of two thousand fourteen. That is going to get resolved, I think, fairly quickly in court. I, anything, and Jan, please let me.
Why don't we just amend this thing and pay what's in arrears, take the fifty-three forty? I'm trying to move this along, so if it's ten minutes into and we're still listening to your opinion, take the fifty-three forty-five, amend it off of this ordinance. Just do the fifty-three forty to get us out of arrears and then we can have discussion around the other. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I, but I, I have not been allowed to say what I wanted to say, so if, if we wanna move on, let's move on.
Okay, 'cause well Sylvia, we have a lot of legislation.
Well, I understand we do.
All right, um, Janelle, you don't, could you please get, let the council know by email exactly how much money is owed right now in arrears um, this week? Would that help?
Um, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, ordinance number one four, one forty-four to, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
So, so fifty, forty-one, we're, we're going to third reading and, and we're.
We're deleting the fifty-three forty.
Line fifty-three forty-five, okay, just wanna know.
That ordinance one forty-one two thousand fifteen and that's Mr. Monas.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's making the amendment, Jan, are you making that?
Um, it's your, it's yours, Nick, so just make the amendment.
So, fifty-three.
To three, to make it to.
Fifty-three forty-five, we're taking out for right now.
Fifty-three forty-five is to be removed.
Which we removed and it had the three grand.
No, the three grand's already in there under fifty-three forty.
So, we delete that one one.
Okay.
We can do two, three.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to ordinance number, we're skipping ordinance number one fifty-four two thousand fifteen. Dave, um, would you please take that? And that's an ordinance to transfer from unencumbered special assessment fund for the semi-annual payment for Norwich Freeway Drive bond improvement.
Which we're, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to get.
Oh, you know what, that's right, because I numbered them because we didn't have a number, so they're not gonna know.
And this is gonna be, and this is gonna be what number then? One fifty-four?
Yes, one fifty-four. It's an ordinance to transfer from unencumbered special.
All right, so we're going that second.
Second page, second one from the bottom.
All right.
And uh, Janelle, um, I mean, uh.
I think this is up through reading.
Mr. Miglerini, would you like to speak on this or do you want Janelle to speak on it?
Well, it's, this is again just a note fund, so you're just gonna pay it down. It's a, it's a special assessment fund and uh, this is the scheduled payment.
So, it's a third reading.
It's a third reading, is everybody comfortable with third reading?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Um, then the next one, the last, um, right after that uh, is one fifty-five, ordinance one fifty-five two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, would you please take that? And that's an ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen appropriations in order to fulfill the two thousand fifteen debt service requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Miglerini, would you like to speak on this or would you like to know?
Yeah, this is just to keep us so that we have funds to operate and um, this is to be our debt services we continue through the year into the part of.
There's not any questions.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with three readings?
Yep.
Okay, moving on, we're gonna go to the next page, uh, ordinance number one fifty-six two thousand fifteen. Jan, could you please take that? And that's an ordinance authorizing a transfer from service department account, um, uh, fifty-four ten to fifty-five hundred to pay for additional road repairs caused by water main breaks. Do you want, Jan, I mean, uh, Janelle to talk about that or the service department or?
We just had a water break, we have to make the repairs, this is an emergency situation. Having these line items really makes it very difficult to do business in the city, but hopefully we'll resolve this in the future. But um, when you have an emergency situation like this, you gotta go out immediately, obviously, and take care of these types of problems. And now we're having to deal with the, the line item.
Third reading.
Third reading.
Yep.
Jan?
Yep.
Uh, ordinance number, how does, how did I mess this up?
One hundred and fifty-six. You doing all the financial ones?
Yeah. One, uh, ordinance number one fifty-seven, two thousand fifteen. Nick, would you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating the transfer from general funds to service department for the balance of funds needed for the renewal of the International Society of Arbor Culture membership. I guess that could be like, what's three readings on that?
Say that three times fast.
Okay.
I think those, three hundred bucks or something.
It's a hundred and seventy something.
The whole thing was that, but they didn't have enough money.
So, a hundred and seventy-five bucks to make a homeowner.
They didn't have any money in their ownership?
They didn't have enough money in that line item.
Okay, ordinance number one fifty-eight two thousand fifteen. Uh, Dave, could you please take that? That is an ordinance appropriating a transfer from general funds to service department for the balance of funds needed for the December payment to A and S Animal Control Services. I think we should go three readings on that one, that's a little, as well. Okay, um, ordinance one fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, could you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating a transfer from general funds to the police department account fifty-six hundred to provide uh, funds for November prisoner meals expenses. I say we go three readings on that as well.
What, we feed them?
Yes.
Yeah, right, right.
Actually, pretty good in there, Dave.
Yeah, my only.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
It's good, right.
Maybe I'll stop by for breakfast tomorrow.
Thought I'd throw that in since we're on meals.
Let me ask a question about these November prisoner meals. Have we had a forecast of what we're paying monthly and why is this odd?
I'd imagine that fluctuates dramatically.
I mean, are we having, you know, like two prisoners a month, ten days?
He stepped out.
Yeah, it was Thanksgiving and it was another three K. I just wondered why it's such a variance.
I know, well, we could go back.
Well, I think it has a lot to do with the amount of prisoners that we have at any given time and I think during this holiday season we're.
We're arresting people a lot more.
Why do we have a lot more prisoner meals?
The three thousand?
With the amount of prisoners we have.
Okay, and you're saying we had a, well, there was a, when you forecast prisoner meals at the beginning of the year, do you allow for variations like that or wouldn't?
Just kinda base it off what it was the year before.
Okay, and it's.
And Sylvia.
So, do we need to have any more for December meals?
We pay December's meals in January.
Yeah, and Sylvia also, still for, sometimes prisoners do do their time in Macedonia.
Well, I know that, I'm not arguing that.
There are just a ton of variables that um, there's just too many variables.
Oh, and you have, well, that's, my only question was, why was there that many variables, okay?
Ordinance number one sixty-two thousand fifteen. Jan, could you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating a transfer from general funds to the police department account listed below for the necessary pairs to the police cruiser. Okay, uh, three readings on that? Is everybody okay?
Yep.
And I think that's all on us skipping around.
Can I make a procedural suggestion?
Sure.
So, we don't get confused, since we've all agreed on everything so far, why don't we let the young lady go? Why don't we take him in order so we don't strain ourselves?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, she's fine now.
Yeah, she can go.
Yeah, I know, she, I mean.
Doesn't need to hang around.
Her professor is waiting.
Yeah.
You can always stay if you want.
Yeah, right. She, she looks smarter than. Which one is that?
Did we miss one?
One forty-four.
One fifty-three.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, one fifty-three.
All right, and uh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number one fifty-three, uh, two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, that'll be yours. That's an, that's an ordinance appropriating funds and various transfer of funds for upcoming expenses as itemized below.
Oh, yes, I saw that.
Janelle, you wanna talk about that?
Just um, trying to get everything figured out for the end of the year.
Right, yeah, I, I read through it, it's fine.
Okay, so we're, okay, everybody's okay with three, three readings. Okay, thanks, Janelle.
You were brilliant, Janelle.
Really?
All right, um, let's go on back, we're on ordinance number one twenty-five two thousand fifty. Uh, Mr. Monar, that is yours and uh, we're going into, are we still at stick, keeping it at second or are we going to third reading or?
I think we need to go to third reading.
Yeah, just.
We have no choice, right?
We have no choice, we have to comply or otherwise we're being violation of the new tax codes.
Okay.
Yes, I, I went through the, the attachment. Uh, it didn't appear that we were doing very much to the original material. Is there anything outstanding that needed to be looked at?
I think it's just a lot of boilerplate language that we have to, and I'm sure that you all received a copy of a, like a summary or if you didn't, certainly.
Yes, we did. I was wondering if we, this, the actual attachment was fifty-four pages, so yeah. I was interested to see if there was any specific thing that stood out.
I met with Rita this past week and there were, or last week rather, and really there was nothing outstanding other than just to comply with the new state laws and, and the general verbiage that they, they put into their, their text. And there were, I can't specifically tell you anything that was glaring at me that when I read it or heard it, that changed much. So, it's just a matter of complying with the state legislatures changes and, and that's it.
I, that was my impression, I just wanted to know if you had any other observations.
Well, you were gonna write questions to Rita, did you do that?
When, when I went, when I went through, when I went through the material during the finance meeting, I discussed it. Actually, Josephine had some observations and we decided that that wouldn't have been necessary.
Right, okay. Okay, cool. Okay, everybody, um, we're gonna move on if everybody's okay. Uh, we are at resolution number one thirty-one two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, that is yours and uh, that's a resolution approving the mayor's removal of Scott Swab as director of finance. And uh, I say we go to uh, second and third reading on that if everybody's okay.
Yep. There's been some discussion and I have proposed some amendments, so I'll talk to you about them now if you don't mind.
Okay.
Trying to make this neat, sweet and get it over with. Uh, I would propose that we amended to the first paragraph, wherefore, mayor could appoint Scott Swab and uh, director of finance and where, and mayor Miglerini has requested his termination. Then get rid of all the rest of the wherefore clauses and change section one to council supports the termination of Scott Swab from the position of director of finance by mayor Miglerini to forthwith and get rid of all the verbiage. That would be my amendment.
Do we need an effective date?
Second and third reading, are you okay with that?
I didn't, I just said forthwith.
It's gonna save the city about sixteen thousand dollars as we do it immediately.
Okay.
So, would we need to add an effective date?
Well, forthwith immediately.
So, as soon as it's executed.
So, Sylvia's reading this, you just wanna hand her your amendment or do you want to amend?
I can amend it.
That'll be good.
I wanna, okay. Be part of it.
I wanna ask one question and point out also that I had asked about if this was drug on until January first. I think he gets a certain amount of money and I, I think you have a number for that?
Uh, yes.
I didn't even see her.
But we're not, we're not.
We're not doing that.
Well, I want, I wanna make sure that everyone aware, 'cause until you're on the floor and vote about it, you should hear what this number is, 'cause this is important and relevant to what we're doing.
Um, so the difference if um, Scott were to be terminated effective today with today's council meeting or if it was taken to January fourteenth, which is the first council meeting of the new year, the difference would be fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. So, that's the total.
Okay, thanks Claudia.
You're welcome.
So, put simply, if it doesn't happen today, he gets an additional fourteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we know, okay. It's uh, okay, so resolution, yes, I can do math. Ordinance number one forty-one two thousand fifteen, uh, Nick, um, that is yours. And it is an ordinance making a.
We have already discussed that one.
Okay, that's right. Okay, well, Dave said we had to stay in order. Okay, ordinance number one forty-one two thousand fifteen.
Dave's a stock.
Sylvia, that is yours. That's an ordinance providing for the two thousand sixteen temporary appropriations. And that is, um, I, I think that we should go um, second and third reading?
Yes.
If everybody's okay?
Works for me.
Okay. Ordinance number one forty-eight two thousand fifteen. Jan, um, would you please take that? That is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigent persons charged with violations of the codified ordinances, city of Macedonia. Can we go three readings?
Yep.
Okay.
That's possible.
Okay. Ordinance number one forty-nine two thousand fifteen. Dave, if you could take that? That is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year contract with Julian and, is it Grub?
Group.
Group eight for certain financial services and this is pertaining to audit services. If everybody would like to know.
Yeah, what's, I'd like to know what this is about, really.
Okay, and uh, who's on? Joe, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, uh, I'm not totally familiar with the company, but the audits, I, they wanted a three-year contract and they have been in place for apparently a number of years with the city. Uh, they apparently um, kinda monitor our, our, our books and stuff and give us the laws and stuff.
They provide the gap conversion in preparation of the audit.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I.
So, they wanted a three-year contract, not knowing much about them and, or meeting them, I just said, let's extend it for one year.
So, it's basically the same terms as last year?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
It's a, it's slightly up.
It's up because we're not doing three years.
It's always, yeah, but I certainly understand. And they start right in January, the end of March. And then that's about the time that the auditors are committed.
Yeah, they do the gap every year.
Would we change, does this mean every year we could have a new auditor so the history isn't known?
Well, this isn't the auditor, but we're, we're, we're gonna be doing a two thousand sixteen, another audit this year.
Right.
But we'll, we haven't even began to hire that company yet. Whoever's gonna do that, 'cause whoever the state auditor will certify to us, then we'll hire for this coming year.
I don't know if there, anyone would ever say, but quite a number of people.
Mr. Miglerini, can I bring something to your attention? Um, we had appropriated money this, uh, last, this year um, for a performance audit. Um, the money's there and uh, but they were waiting for us to have a finance director. So, keep that in mind when you get a finance director, that uh, we do have money for a performance audit and it'll look at every, every department, okay, sir? All right, I wanted to make sure you knew that. I don't know if you were aware of it or not.
I was, I was aware.
Okay, I just wanna remind you, all right. If everybody's comfortable, can we please do three readings?
Yep.
Okay. Ordinance number one fifty-two thousand fifteen.
But who's, who's doing that?
I'm sorry, Davis.
I am.
Okay.
I thought you heard me, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear that.
Um, ordinance number one fifty-two thousand fifteen Sylvia, um, that will be yours.
Okay.
Um, that's an ordinance authorizing and directing, um, the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Continued Care Administrators Inc. in order to assist and provide employers with federal Cobra compliance for the year two thousand sixteen. And again, this is, um, I think this is important for three readings and also, they also work when, um, he gets a finance director. Um, they work directly with Claudia there. Nobody knows who Claudia is, Claudia Nilliger, raise your hand. She is your human resource, um, uh, director and uh, so, um, usually the finance director and Claudia will work together with the mayor and uh, the company he picks, right?
Correct.
So, uh, three readings, okay? Ordinance number one fifty-one two thousand fifteen. Jan, would you please take that? And that's an ordinance authorizing and ratifying an agreement with the Tri-County Employees Assistance Program. And again, the same thing, uh, three readings, um, they will work directly with Claudia, the finance director and the mayor.
This is standard.
Okay, three readings?
Yep.
All right, am I going too fast?
No, no.
Okay.
We've all drank a lot of coffee, so we're.
Ordinance number one fifty-two two thousand fifteen. Nick, would you please take that? That's an ordinance amending section one sixty point twenty A and F of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia so as to ratify the current practice of funding employees' health savings account. Love of, that's all.
Claudia?
Um, some background on this.
Claudia, why don't you come up to the table?
You could come up here if you like.
You don't bother.
This is my last one too, so.
Okay.
Our charter already has language in it that discusses that employees have health saving accounts established. Does not explain however, how they are funded, which are by the city, um, so that employees can make their deductible each year. So, this is putting that language in there, so we're in compliance and this was brought up by the state auditor, so it's something that.
In the management letter, right.
Needs to be done, so, okay.
Right.
Thanks Claudia.
So, it's three readings.
Yes, three readings. If, if, nobody has any complaints. Okay, again, we're gonna, we're.
Who's doing that?
That was Nick. Uh, ordinance one fifty-three we spoke of, uh, Sylvia, you have that one. Ordinance one fifty-four we spoke of, Dave, you have that one. Ordinance one fifty-five is Sylvia. Ordinance number one fifty-six is Jan. Ordinance number one fifty-seven is Nick. Ordinance number one fifty-eight is Dave. Ordinance one fifty-nine is Sylvia. Ordinance number one sixty is Jan. And then now we're on to resolution number one sixty-one two thousand fifteen. Nick, would you please take that? That's a resolution confirming the appointment of Anthony Cox to the planning commission. Um, I do have a little, I, I had said early on that when there was a new mayor, that, you know, that we wait and we'll see who his appointments are. I think we should go to three readings and that's just my opinion.
I agree. Works for me.
Well, especially if we try to review change.
Yeah, I don't know.
We're obligated to have in place, but right now, we're gonna be running with two members on the planning commission because Dave cannot return, the mayor cannot return. So, there's only two members on board that are on there right now. So, if we don't appoint these individuals, we will have no form for the next meeting.
But we already said we're gonna appoint.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just, just point that.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miglerini on his appointments?
I, I have.
I, I have.
But is there appointment for the next meeting or for the first meeting in January?
For the first meeting in January.
Okay, 'cause I, I.
This is.
'Cause I already got the packet for December, that's why I was confused. All right, thanks.
You're obligated to December first.
Crap. Okay, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Sylvia, it'll be a holiday.
I did review, I did review Mr. Cox. There's any here that's probably qualified.
Three readings?
Uh, yeah, fine.
Yep.
You know, I don't see that as an issue. Who is doing that now?
That is Nick.
Nicholas.
All right.
Resil.
The next one is Mr. Shiv.
Resolution number 162, 2015. Dave, could you please take that? That's a resolution confirming the appointment of, I cannot say his last name, but Shavoni, to the planning commission. Thanks, guys. And I say we do three readings, and again, the same, I feel that Mr. Miglerini, we had a choice of picking his people. And I say we do three readings.
Works for me.
I had one question about Mr. Shiv, and was, he mentioned that he was on the Stormwater Committee or, you know. And one of the things that I understood, that there was an issue between the Stormwater Committee members and him, and he was asked to resign. Do you know if that's true or not?
I've never heard that before. Joe's been involved with the city in many different, he used to serve on the architecture review board for the city.
I don't remember that at all.
You were on the Stormwater.
Well, but I, I talked to the head of the Stormwater Committee, and I was told that that happened. So I just wanted to confirm whether you did or did not know that.
And what year was that, by the way?
Well, that would've been back at, back in 2008, probably.
I don't remember that at all.
Don't remember it.
Very.
I wouldn't know.
Is everybody okay, though, with three readings?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
Resolution number 163, 2015. Jan, could you please take that? And that's a resolution confirming the appointment of Stacy.
Good luck.
Yeah, well.
Suji.
To the Parks and Recreation person. How do you say her name?
Suji.
Suji. I just remember Josephine. Oh, yeah, Josephine, how do I say that now?
Actually, I've been practicing it.
Okay.
And I, I don't think Suji.
I know Stacy, I don't know how to say her last name.
If everyone's okay?
Absolutely. And this is for the one year.
Correct.
We also have one that we'll be doing for the two-year. And then we have a gentleman who has expressed interest, his term is up. He would like to stay and, and come back for the, the term again, for the new term. So those will be presented in January. So this is a replacement.
Okay. Resolution number 164, 2015. Sylvia, that's a resolution requesting an independent audit of the City of Macedonia's conformance with the established purchasing controls and proper public purpose expenditures requirements. That was something that Dave said that he wanted a resolution. He agreed on a resolution back, I think it was the last council meeting. So Sylvia has introduced a resolution, number 164, 2015. I think we should just go for first, second, and third readings. Anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, timeout. This was presented at 12:44 today, and you wanna go three readings on it?
We've done that before with other things.
I don't agree with this at all.
I would agree to one reading, and let's talk about it. Because normally, and I know we're trying not to do normal, we don't hire an auditor. When we have audit findings, we work with the HR person, the finance director, and the mayor to rectify those audit findings. You don't spend the money before you have a, and, and we've done that in the past for all the audits, and we've actually taken some audits that were pretty darn ugly and had them turned around in a year or two. So I would say, let's have first reading on it. We really need to talk about, before we spend more money, there's an economical way to take care of this in-house.
Let me just say this.
Sylvia, go on your.
I don't have a problem with keeping it in the first reading.
Okay.
But here's the thing. This particular, this particular set of findings and recommendations that were in the management letter, I noticed we responded to a couple of those already, which is good. And there are many others in here that need to be responded to, but those are cleanup items. This one involves the, a specific area of controls, internal controls and expenditures, where there's already been a documentation here that we're not following procedures and that we could, in fact, be, in essence, spending money inappropriately, taxpayers' funds. So, and because of the people involved who are authorizing these things, they're right at the top of the administrative chain, I don't believe that it's appropriate to have that done internally. I think it, an external auditor, even somebody like Julian Groob could do it, where they would come in and do a specific review of this. And it's, it's been in other places in the past. It, it basically assures both the council and the public that there, there is a legitimate, complete review of how we were doing business and recommendations, and perhaps even there could be things that would be recommended for discipline of certain employees if they failed to follow established procedures, which they've already said that they've done. So I do believe this, because of the, of the level of the people involved in these kind of transactions, that doing it internally is inappropriate.
Although I think that we have perfect opportunity. You said you'd like somebody independent. You have a mayor who has not been in office, so he has no play in this finding. We have a new HR director who has no play in this finding, who are both gonna look at it as an independent eye. So why should I spend money, inappropriate money, to have a, an independent person come in when I have, and we'll have a finance director who's independent and has not been involved? You know, some of these findings come, one of them's from the year before. The tree department funding was an issue the year before, so we don't have, we'll have three new people internally that actually can look at this, that we don't have to spend any money. And I want to, you know, if we're gonna spend our money, we've got more important things. I hate to say this is important, but the level that we're talking about and the past history of how we've dealt with it before, I think the money's better spent on some other things. Let's let the three new independent people take a look at it. They'll just upon where appropriate.
She just mentioned one company he would like to hire could even look at this. So, I mean, I think, you know, you should talk to Mr. Miglerini about it. Sylvia, if you feel comfortable with that company looking at it.
I do.
Because I was, I was there in the auditing, and what this is, is, you know, I, they were basically saying in norm, in other cities, the procedure is that a mayor has a credit card, finance director has a credit card, and when somebody needs to use the credit card, they go to those, they go to one of you, you know, and you authorize it. And everybody, all the department has to have credit cards, the mayor has a credit card. And there were credit cards used that exceeded $100, which they're supposed to have a PO. They didn't have a PO. And some of the items bought, large items, a lot of money's been spent on credit cards that had nothing to do with city business.
Didn't they not turn anything?
No.
No, I haven't, I have, I have just started to.
I know.
Look into this, by the way.
So I just wanted you to know what was going on.
There is a policy and procedure, and by the way, the auditors, wasn't a finding, it was a recommendation.
It was a recommendation, that's what I said.
So there was no finding against the city.
Yeah, but they.
So we need to make that clear.
That's a big difference, so.
We are going to have a 2016 audit. I am going to reinforce the policy on credit cards and POs. And I'm in the process of obviously putting in a finance director, and I think we may have one who is a past state, or has been a state auditor or working as a state auditor, and who's a CPA. And I'm looking forward to bringing that person on very shortly. And I think we'll make sure that we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is.
And I think the dollars involved in here are less than, less than 1%. So we're, you know, I don't want the public going out thinking that someone spent $50,000 themselves on an item.
We're talking about some expenditures for some donuts, that they have a conference or something.
No, 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 no. There was more than that. They talked to us, they talked.
In reading through this.
I haven't seen it yet, so I.
I know, I know, but I, it was, Joe, it was more than that.
I'm only telling you what might be, what's on the air, so.
I know, but.
That's true.
Yeah, oh, yeah, go on then, sorry.
In reading through this, I, I think there's definitely some issues there, and, and the, not saying we're sweeping those under the rug, but a lot of things were procedural. And to say that we're gonna spend another up to $25,000 for a witch hunt, I think is wildly inappropriate. I think there's many other needs in this community right now, when we're just gonna repair something that's procedural. And with the new mayor, he's sitting before us, telling us that this procedural error will be corrected. This is not something.
We don't know that.
Can I speak, please?
Yes.
This is not something where I think it's a vicious act of displeasance. I think this is more of a procedural problem that's gonna be corrected. So I am vehemently opposed to spending $25,000 for yet another investigation to lead us down a road of nothing.
Sylvia is actually feeling comfortable, though, with this company looking at whatever happened last year. Okay, Joe, that's what she's talking about.
Well, well, could I just say this? This is typical of a situation in which people have gotten comfortable not doing things in the correct way. And they may, in fact, have been spending taxpayers' money inappropriately. And the level of people involved means in a normal GAO audit, for instance, you would have an outside person coming in. You would not be asking those, and actually, the leadership would ask for that. It would not be something where it's a witch hunt, or the, it's not a witch hunt to ask people to look at records and determine if, for example, people have to pay back whatever they, they have spent money on, because it's not a witch hunt. And I don't, I don't prejudge anything. I'm just saying this kind of thing. Now, I put a not to exceed number in there simply because I didn't want to have anybody speculating beyond a, you know, ridiculous number. But what you normally will do, it says, just basically to go to the auditor state and ask either their staff or an IPA firm like Julian Groob to come in and look at this. And they give you an estimate of what it would take. It's probably not going to be close to that, it's probably gonna be less, and that's what we would be spending. I think it's well worth doing that to ensure that everybody is understanding what has happened in the past and what appropriate, what are the appropriate steps for the future.
I agree with you, and I understand what you're saying, but here's the problem I'm having with it. This was brought about today at 12:44 PM, trying to get rushing for a third read. Hold on, let me finish, please.
I'm not.
Trying to get rushed into a third read when it's being presented as something of a Jimmy Demora situation, when reality is, this is not.
She's not rushing it through. That was me, yeah, but that was me.
It's trying to be made into a Jimmy Demora situation, when really, we're talking about.
Well, it is not Jimmy. Who said that? There is nothing in there that says it's Jimmy Demora.
Right, yeah.
Well, you know, in all, listen, in all fairness.
I did that.
If the, if the state auditor has found it and recommended some changes in, in enforcement of policy, if they would have seen anything which was totally inappropriate, in my opinion, they would have made that into a citation as opposed to a recommendation.
But however, what they, Joe, just let me point out something to you.
We're taking a recommendation and trying to make it into a citation without giving the administration an opportunity to correct and rectify and have a new administration and a new HR and a new finance director. The one that bothers me more is the tree fund, because we've talked about that while the.
That is a procedure.
Mr. Spab was still finance director, and it still was noted again. Why doesn't that one pop out?
Well, that's a different issue. That's a problem in the way that we're, and they say that very clearly. We have a problem controlling that. But let me just speak to Joe on this specific issue. This, this kind of environment where, and it's got nothing to do, there's no implication here. It says a noted significant lapses in compliance with established procedures, that's all it says. And that because of the level of people involved, we want an outside person to look at this. We wanna see what's going on. It's not unreasonable to do that. And, you know, we're not rushing it through today, I'm certainly not. But I do think that we're calling it a witch hunt and doing all that, we're not trying to hurt anybody. We're trying to make sure that if there is a process going on where taxpayer funds are being utilized for other than public purposes, that we prevent that in future. And the way to do that is to know what has happened and who's involved.
What was the purpose of the audit performed if they've already told us the recommendation, that we should formally adopt the policy?
Why is this a first reading?
Why did I have an audit if they've already told me what they recommended me to adopt?
Okay.
In all fairness to me, if you will, is that I have not had an opportunity to thoroughly investigate all of what was spent through credit cards.
Yeah.
But I can assure you of this, is that the policy will be, is in place, and the policy will be followed, and the recommendations of the state auditor will be followed. And if there is a breach in that issue again, then you would have a good basis, if you thought there was some spending that was out of line, to then make that recommendation. But at least at this point in time, I need to be able to get in there and enforce it. So what good would it be to go on beyond, if you will, to go to some extent of having this expensive audit done, when in fact, we're gonna be audited in 2016? And I can ask the auditors to make a specific look at that. At the time they come in to do the audit.
Well, I, I think that that, that may be a possibility. What I'm saying is this. The, they've already documented not only that we didn't follow procedure, but that there were specific, the specific documentation that was missing that is normally, has to be there in order for there to be any kind of a payment of a public money. And there was literally no detailed document there with it.
Sure. Sylvia, I've gone through a lot of audits as mayor in this city and as a councilor and elected official here. And I can tell you that if the state auditors came in and they found something that was clearly glaring and inappropriate, that recommendation would have been a finding and a citation.
I know that, but they didn't look at that for the purpose of doing a finding. What they did is, they reviewed it to see if we were following procedure and to see what documentation had been provided when we paid money. And that's all they did. So they did not go into, where's that document?
They had the opportunity during an audit to take a recommendation into a citation. And then Dave's been trying to say something.
Dave, Dave, go, Dave.
May I, may I make a comment?
Yes.
It would seem to me, and I understand that our new mayor has been in office less than a couple of weeks, and is probably working very hard and trying to get his feet under him, and I appreciate that. And I have no idea of the scope of this project problem, and I'm sure a lot of us don't really know. Would it make sense for the mayor to ask someone at the finance department to, to go back for a year or whatever and say, at least say, okay, we have 25, we have 30, we have two. What, what is the amount we have in number? Where, what are the stores, you know, are, are they at Joanne Fabrics? Are, are, are they at the hardware store or the gas station? I think that makes a big difference. And how much of each? And, and maybe it would seem reasonable as to who was the one using the credit card. Just know the facts, just put them on the table and see what we got.
Yeah.
I agree. And, and you'll do that. I'll do that.
Great, thanks, Joe.[1698.39]